Hi Dan.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. Do you have your video on?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay, now I see you.
No. Sorry.
No problem.
Oh gosh, so they having the MAS C conferences here?
They are. It's gonna be Zoom.
It'll be virtual meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Not near as much fun as going to the Cape.
No.
All right, it is seven o'clock and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I will ask that everybody please be patient with me. I am on a small piece of technology. I can't see everybody. I will do my best to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. I'm not sure if the best way maybe for people to, I think you put a chat, put your name down or something, and then I can write down who you are and bring you into the discussion. I'm not the best with technology, so again, please bear with me. I believe we have a quorum of school community members, so we'll open the meeting and we'll begin with public hearings. So I think there are going to be people here to talk a little bit about perhaps next steps with the school as far as opening and different models. We're gonna discuss that in just a few minutes, so for people who think you don't know where, where's an opportunity for you to speak, we'll try to get through real quick the beginning part of this, which is approving minutes and such, and then we'll have an opportunity to discuss all of that and listen to members of the Board of Health who are with us as well. And if you see my hand going up here, I'm admitting people in. So we're gonna move past the public hearings and go to the review of the agenda and perpetual calendar. I will say in reviewing that with COVID, lots of things have changed, so I'm gonna sort of pass over that and move on to warrants and gifts. Do we have any gifts or warrants? All right, we oftentimes don't have gifts, warrants, it's a process.
We do have warrants.
You haven't, Stephen?
I do. I'm yelling, but you can't hear me yell. All right. I have two, Trevor, don't worry, I've got one more to input, then I'll send it to you. All right, I have a payroll warrant from October 5th, 2020 in the amount of seventy-two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And I have a payroll warrant number 308, that was 307, the previous one. 308 from 10, 19, 2020 in the amount of seventy thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. And then I have four others.
All right, is that your motion to approve those?
I'm not. I'm not done.
Oh, keep going.
War- voucher number 3006 dated September 8th, 2020 in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-four cents. Number 3007 from September 23rd, 2020 in the amount of forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents. Number 3008 from September 23rd, 2020 and this one's encumbered from FY 2020 in the amount of one thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. And finally, number 3009 from October 5th, 2020 in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents with one hundred dollars of that encumbered from fiscal year 20. That's it.
All right, and is that your motion to approve those warrants?
Yes, it is.
All right, we need a second.
I'll second.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote. All in favor?
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Hey, aye, all right. Let's move on to the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from September 17th, 2020?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from, yeah, whatever that date was.
September 17th, all right.
September 17th.
I second.
All right, are there any changes, edits? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote?
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Hey, aye, all right. Unfinished business, all right. I guess it is unfinished, so 2020 reopening. Jackie, how would you like to meander through this? Would you like us to hear from the Board of Health Representatives first?
Uh, it's up to you on how you want to do it. You can certainly, the Board of Health has until eight o'clock.
Right.
However, there are, I believe, some parents I see here and, and teachers. Maybe I would maybe have the Board of Health go after some of those comments, considering these people, I think, just want to share their thinking, and I don't know if they're gonna necessarily stay if there's not gonna be a vote.
Okay, so just so everybody is clear, this evening, we won't be voting on reopening the school. At this point, we're going to be sharing information, collecting data, and listening to some of your thoughts and ideas and concerns. So with that said, do, Jackie, do you want to talk about what your plans and thoughts were first, or?
No, I'd rather wait until my, my time in the, in the meeting.
All right, and Trevor, you, you're ready to go, so as I said, if people would like to speak or say something, maybe put your, do a, a hand or something like that, so I can, I know who wants to speak. Does anyone have any thoughts about reopening plans? Or you can just start speaking if you'd like. I think your face will jump up onto the screen. Okay. Am I missing anybody? Does anyone see anything that I don't?
Yes, Dan, so Nina Emery has put up her virtual hand, her blue hand.
Okay, so. Okay, I'm sorry, so.
So I'm unmuted, I can go ahead if you'd like.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I'm a parent of a student at the school, so I, it sounds like this is the moment for me to, to speak up, but if that's not the case, let me know. I have never attended one of these meetings before.
This is the perfect.
Okay, great. So I'm the parent of David Williams, who's in the kindergarten classroom at Shute's Berry and was in the preschool classroom for two years before that, and I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience as a parent through the remote learning this fall. Keeping in mind that I, there's so much that I don't know about the school system and everything that is going on. I'm also, I'm a professor, so I feel like I have some sense as an educator of how hard it has been for teachers to have, you know, their job just completely changed underneath them. And everything that I have seen at Shute's Berry, the teachers and the administration are working so hard, and we're really grateful for that. All that said, it has been a really hard first few months of, of school for my son, who is a, an awesome energetic kid who loves to learn and who loved the Shute's Berry, who loved going to preschool at Shute's Berry. But the remote learning system for a five-year-old just seems to me to be, and I don't use this word lightly, it seems to me to be impossible for him to really get anything approximating what he usually gets out of, what he would usually get out of the classroom, out of the iPad. And I think that it's just, so I just wanted to share that, and I think it's important to keep in mind that this is somebody who has, you know, a teacher who's doing an amazing job, who has two parents who have relatively flexible jobs and can be chaperoning him through it, but just the logistics of a five-year-old sitting in front of the screen for that long of the day seemed to me to be something that just doesn't really work. And so I was hesitant to say much about that this summer before I had actually seen it for myself, but now that I have seen it for myself, I think it's worth just kind of sharing that perspective as a parent. I think it's really undermining his, you know, how he thinks about school as a positive place and a place that he wants to be and something that he is excited to participate in, and, and I'm just not sure that that is gonna be able to change until he goes back in some capacity in person. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Nina?
That was Nina.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trevor, who was next? I can't see.
So, at the bottom of your Zoom window, there should be a button that says participants, Dan, and if you click that, you should get a list of all the participants in the upper right-hand corner, and then if somebody raises their hand, you'll see it there.
Okay.
In fact, I'll raise my hand so you can test, so you can see my little blue hand. And then you can clear those, or the people who raised their hand can clear them.
Okay, I see all the participants, I don't see your blue hand.
He took his hand.
I raised it again, yeah, so you see it now? That's what it looks like.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to share your thoughts? And again, I just want everyone to know that this is an opportunity. We're all here together, we're all here really for the same thing. We want to make sure that we do the best for our students in the most safe way that we can. So this meeting is really designed for people to share their thoughts and feelings. There's no right, there's no wrong, so please feel comfortable to share and say anything you want.
Dan, I'm seeing Alicia Richter raise her hand.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. It's good to see you, by the way. I'm Alicia Richter, I am a parent of a preschooler, and I first want to say that I am absolutely in love with this school, every, at Shute's Berry, I should say. Everyone is amazing, Grace is doing an amazing job with preschoolers in remote learning, which is not an easy task. Um, my biggest concern is IP services. My daughter gets speech, and Lauren is doing an awesome job, awesome job with her remotely. I just worry that she may be falling behind with that, so that's my big concern when we consider reopening those services.
Thank you. Got your hands full there, that's great. All right. Grace, would you like to speak?
Okay, hi, my name is Grace Screechy, I'm the preschool teacher in Shute's Berry. I have been there about 14 years, and what I'd like to do is read the letter to the school committee, if that's okay. It was written by a few teachers and signed by quite more than a few teachers. Is this a good time to share that?
Yeah, I'm just concerned, I know we did all receive that letter, and I'm just concerned about everyone having an opportunity to speak.
It's really up to you, I mean, I can, I mean, you did receive it, but I don't know if parents could appreciate this perspective unless they heard.
Why don't you go ahead and read through it, you know, swiftly?
Okay, I actually talk too fast, I was gonna try to talk slower.
You're doing awesome.
Okay, dear school committee, as we face a steady rise in the number of COVID cases in our state, the beginning of cold and flu season, and the possibility of a winter lockdown, we do not support transitioning to a hybrid model. We believe that it is in the best interest of our students to continue work from the structures we have so recently constructed based on best practices. The time and effort involved in making remote learning a success cannot be underestimated. This effort began in the summer, continued through weeks of professional learning, and reflects the dedication and determination of our staff to make the best of our current situation. Since March, we, teachers and staff, have guided our students through trauma, upheaval, resettling, and finally, a feeling of relative calm and predictability. We recognize that remote learning is not perfect, and it is not in-person with friends and teachers. However, remote learning does help to maintain connections with friends and community, is predictable and safe, and it does provide high-quality learning opportunities. We understand that working parents need childcare, and the lack of childcare is a huge strain on families right now. We also understand that returning to school might feel like a solution to this problem. Looking forward, it would bring upheaval to our newly created learning routines, a false sense of returning to normal, and result in instability. These are not the ingredients for learning. We strongly feel that we have the resources, the vision, and the expertise to provide rigorous and engaging online curriculum opportunities to our students. At this time, a transition to remote, to hybrid model risks repeating the upheaval and trauma of last spring, just after our remote learning routines have become familiar and successful. We urge you not to adopt an in-person hybrid model at this time, and it's signed by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21 teachers from Shute's Berry Elementary School. And thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, and if you can take your hand down, and I'm gonna go to the person next.
You got it.
Thank you for helping me with that. Shute's Berry PTO.
Hi, can you all hear me? I'm using my daughter's headphones, so I apologize that I am not logged as myself. This is Melissa Warwick. I am also a, the vice president of the PTO, and I didn't realize I was. I am also a, the vice president of the PTO and I didn't realize I was on the PTO Zoom account when I logged in. So I have, I have three children, uh, two of which are in elementary school. One is in the middle school. Uh, the, the two in the elementary school are in the first grade and fourth grade. And, um, trying to gather, gather thoughts. And so everything is, uh, clear and coherent for you. The spring was very, very hard and, um, I didn't know what to expect from the cell. But I really only have positive things to say about, uh, school and how it is going. We, we being my husband and I, um, even before, you know, knowing numbers and everything, we had decided that we would keep all of our children home, remote learning, um, for safety purposes and for, for continuity purposes. You know, we just, you know, just sort of had that feeling that if our kids were to go back to school, even, you know, uh, in any sort of hybrid model that, you know, partway into the school year, they would be taken out of, of, uh, school and be put in, back in remote learning or, um, increased cases or in actual COVID outbreak within the school. Um, and for us, my daughter, older daughter has an IP and for us, and down and uncertainty is, is more stressful than having them home in, in a consistent learning model. Having said that, I understand that I also, uh, prior to this, I was only substitute teaching, meaning I wasn't in a full-time position. So, um, I can be home with my children fairly easily. Um, my husband works from home, so we just are in our own little bubble and it felt safe to do that. And, um, you know, they, there are three of them, so they have children to play with in our own little bubble. You know, I, we have all the sort of, right, or easy things to be in our own space. And, um, you know, not that they get social interaction much with other children, but at least they have children to play with each other. Um, so anyway, it's a, it's a very tricky thing that, that can, trying to have a consistent, um, learning environment for them, I guess, is what, what I, you know, we are striving for. And, um, just throw this out there, the Amherst school system went back to school for, I think it was a week and a half and in a hybrid model, and now are pulling back to remote learning only on Monday because of the uptick in cases. So, uh, you know, it, it just for us doesn't feel good to, you know, to stop and start essentially their schooling to, you know, that they will get used to this. They have been very used to this, hi, this, uh, remote learning. The teachers have been wonderful. I, I have absolutely no qualms with what is going on at home, meaning with remote learning. Um, and so we would actually probably opt to continue to do that for most of the school year unless something drastically different happened with the virus.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. You could also remove your hand. I don't know how to do that, please. And, uh, is there anyone else? I don't see any other hands up would like to speak before we hear from the Board of Health? All right. Um, Noreen, would you like to share with us your thoughts? And I think it's Arlene with you as well?
She is.
All right. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Noreen Pease. I'm Chair of the Board of Health. Um, I have, uh, many years of experience in public health, but I want everyone here to know that I also spent the latter part of my career as a special education teacher doing evaluations for special ed in pre-K through sixth grade. So I empathize with everyone's concerns and, and needs here tonight. Um, I'm going to defer to Arlene because I know Arlene has been working, um, with, uh, Kate, Katie Harrington. And, uh, we should talk a little bit about some of the background that we've been thinking about in terms of the metrics. And I know there's been quite a team at work of public health nurses in Franklin County talking about these measures and how we make these decisions for some time. And also introduce Arlene. Arlene is our, um, nurse practitioner on the board. And she also monitors a system called Maven, which we'll talk about a little bit more. But it's the reporting system that we use, um, in town and across the state to find out the number of cases that have, that are taking place in town. And we, we monitor that data on a regular basis. So with that, I will defer to Arlene.
Thanks, Noreen. Hi, everyone. Um, as Noreen described, I am a nurse practitioner, recently retired from many years working in college health. Um, and, um, I've had two kids go through Schutze Berry Elementary School and, uh, have fond feelings for the school. So, and for this whole community. And it is really important to me, and I think to the entire Board of Health, that we are very careful and accurate about our interpretation of the public health data that's out there. And that decisions are arrived at in a timely manner, but also in a sound manner. We know what kinds of impact, potential impact, any decisions about phasing up or phasing down this, the school learning model that you're using. We understand the, the sorts of impact that it has on everyone in the school community. And, um, so as is true in a most small-town Boards of Health, we are a bunch of volunteers. We're elected to our positions, but we volunteered to, um, serve in this capacity. None of us has a lot of experience with this whole metrics concept and the calculation of the figures. Uh, so bear with us as we seek advice and counsel from the, um, the supervisory union, the school nurses, public health officials in the area and in the state. Um, I, I've sought advice from a few different sources, including a public, uh, public health statistician who lives here in town. And I think I understand how, uh, I can take the data from the DPH weekly dashboard and put it into a form that addresses the metrics that have been proposed. And I've done so today and, um, uh, I could share them all with you, but, uh, suffice it to say that you are, we are in Franklin and Hampshire County well below the, um, thresholds that have been outlined in the draft metrics, um, proposed for any, uh, changes in this, the school model. And we hope to stay that way. I think communication, it's really important to, um, determine what the lines of communication are between us on the Board of Health and the school as well as the, um, supervisory union. And I, I think we can work with Jackie and Katie to, um, really lay that out as to exactly, um, how to reach us, how we can reach you, when, and on what sort of a regular schedule will we be communicating with the school about where we stand within those metrics? I did see on the, uh, uh, DPH communication today. Uh, and by DPH, I'm referring to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Um, they are reminding us that DESI guidance calls for districts to monitor three weeks of reports before making changes to learning plans for school. In other words, that no one week, uh, from what I'm reading here, no one week's change should determine an opening or a closure of school. Um, and, um, they are also implementing a change where, let me go back and say that part, one of our challenges is that the metrics call for data to be crunched together for, um, Franklin and Hampshire County. Whereas on the public health dashboard, it is listed on a county-by-county basis. And I understand there's some waiting to, um, apply. And that's been a challenge for me, but I think I have it sorted out. But Hampshire County's data includes, it includes Amherst. And Amherst is one of the communities that has, um, an asterisk next to its name because of the presence of a congregate, uh, setting and, uh, secondary or, um, post-secondary, uh, higher education facility that can inordinately weight the community's status in that red, yellow, green status that has been described in the metrics and yet does not necessarily influence the, uh, schools such as Schutze Berry Elementary School. So anyway, it's a complex picture and, um, bear with us as we learn the ropes here. And as I understand it, it is a, uh, a matter of observing these metrics for three weeks. DESI advises before any changes are made to the learning platform.
So the, one of the trickiest things for us is we, in, in our draft plan, um, you know, and I had some communication earlier with Noreen about this. In our draft plan, we use the metrics that are being used by basically, uh, all the schools in Franklin and most of Hampshire County, because it was kind of agreed upon in that, in that health group. Um, but Amherst definitely has some differences in their metrics. Um, and they have, and I don't know if this is through, and this is to everybody. I honestly don't know. If this is through the MOA with the teachers having different metrics or what, but they, it is my understanding that they just closed not because Amherst had an uptick, but because surrounding counties had an uptick. So, um, and maybe Stephen can help us out a little bit with that. But that's what this, that's what I think, um, we're going to need some support with is, you know, the, we, we have proposed metrics. We are a small town. And I'm pretty sure that means if we even had one case, we would be identified as a red town just by statistics.
No, if we, excuse me, if we were to have five cases, we go from being gray, that is unclassified, straight to red. There's no in-between for us.
Okay. Yeah. And that's super helpful to know. Um, but, and maybe Stephen, you can tell us, you know, I have had several parents email me about, you know, are our metrics the same as Amherst? And if Amherst closes, does that mean we would close? And I can't necessarily answer that because I think that they have some other elements within their metrics rather than, than just what I have right now in our draft plan. Stephen, I don't know if you can help us out with that.
Yes, I certainly can. I will say first, the Regional Committee has an executive session at eight o'clock tonight to ask if they want to reconvene and try and renegotiate with the teachers. Because we wanting to get the Amherst teachers back into the schools so badly, we caved and gave them 28 cases per 100,000. And that included five counties, Worcester County, Berkshire County, Hampden County, Hampshire, and Franklin. And like North Hampton's at 56. So if we had gone with the 56 instead of 28, Amherst would still be in school next week.
Right. Like we don't have that element yet in our metrics. So ours are way more dependent on Franklin and Hampshire County cases. And, uh, really that's the biggest component.
And Noreen and Arlene, I know that you've mentioned that you're working with Katie. And I believe Katie is also in connection with the other nurses from Union 28. So, it sounds, you know, and I'm sure you'll have your counterparts as well, um, in the other towns to sort of work with and work through this. And I do appreciate your efforts on this because it's a very, uh, complex and ever-changing and very ambiguous, uh, time with all of this. So, so we, we appreciate what you're doing and how you're doing it. And alls I can say is that we're going to all have to try to work together through this and, and be patient with each other and understanding. Uh, and I think communication is important for all of us.
And they have been so wonderful. Like we send them draft things and teachers send them ideas. They're running by them. Like for example, our librarian is doing pickup. She ran her plan by them. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you. They're super receptive and they're always willing to chime in when we're asking for their, um, help.
Right. And I also want to publicly thank all of the teachers for their thoughts, for, uh, the letter that they have written. Um, I think I'll, I'll speak for myself. I don't want to speak for, for the entire committee, but I will say that, we appreciate your concerns and, uh, it's certainly, uh, something that we will be thinking about as we move through this whole pandemic and, and all of the, uh, things that are associated with it. So, um, it's, it's a time for us not to be, um, not, not to approach this, you know, as adversarial, adversaries, but to, we may have differences of, of opinions at times, but let's all try to work together. And if we can build consensus, and it sounds like that's really what's happening at this point with, uh, the nurses and, and the Board of Health, I think that is amazing. Yes, Noreen?
Dan, I just have one other comment. And, and that is we talked last night about making ourselves available as quickly as possible. If this data changes in any sort of unfortunately negative kind of way that the Board of Health would be available to make decisions and to communicate those back to you and, uh, school personnel as quickly as possible. So, you know, we may want to talk afterward about, you know, who are the best people to communicate with. And I know Arlene is already talking with Katie on a regular basis. But just, you know, who on the Board of Health and, and who in the school system, um, should be chatting about these key kinds of issues. Uh, and I just want to say there may be things other than, um, the data that we get every month that we should keep an eye on. For example, you know, Katie will be observing what's happening in the school every day in terms of the kinds of, uh, health outcomes or things she's observing with students, which might give us some foresight. Uh, for example, as to what might be, you know, might be coming later in the data. So I think it's, uh, absolutely imperative that we, we all communicate on a regular basis. And we're, we just wanted to say that we're here to do that with you.
I wouldn't have expected anything less. You guys are wonderful. So thank you very much. All right. And I believe you two both have to go somewhere else. Is that right?
Yes. Um, we have a few more minutes.
Okay.
If there are any questions. If anyone has any question.
Before you leave, I was just going to ask if there's anyone with any questions specifically for the Board of Health. It's an opportunity to, to ask. If we can use the hand thing again, I'm watching. Okay. I, Trevor, do you see any hands? Okay. So I thank you both for, for all that you're doing. I can say that we all appreciate it. And we will, we will work through this together. So thank you very much.
We will.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Moving on. Jackie.
Uh, yeah. So, um, I feel like, uh, what do I want to do? I'm gonna share. Um, I've been doing a lot of information gathering. And I have some information to share around, um, family, uh, feedback in regards to going forward. I also have some staff data, uh, feedback. And then I want to just speak briefly to the, to the hybrid handbook that we have and some feedback around that. And then, um, and then talk about whatever else anybody else needs. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to try to share my screen. I hope that's enabled up. Do you know how to enable sharing screen, Dan?
Oh my goodness, Trevor.
You know how to do that, Trevor?
Um, yeah. So, uh, Dan, if you click on your own, um, icon, actually, so if you click on, uh, Jackie Mandance's icon in the upper right-hand corner, there's like three, there are three dots you can click on. There should open a menu that.
Okay, um, allowed.
So yeah, there should be
make option.
Uh, you can make her a co-host and that should give her the ability to share her screen if she's a co-host.
It just gave me the option of host. I'm going to switch it to you, Jackie. You okay with that?
Okay. Yep.
See what happens.
Uh, yeah.
I am now the host, it says. I am now the host, it says. Wow. I have the power. Um.
Thank you, Trevor.
So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you see my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay. So here is the little report that I made that, and I'm just going to briefly talk through it. First, I want to move my little faces out of the way over here. So as you can see, we heard back from all families in the school except for one. So that means either through the survey and then we called fam- or emailed families to get the data because I really wanted to present data that was pretty full. And so as you can see here, this is just the breakdown. Here are the grades. Here's the breakdown. It's very interesting that some classes, if we did end up going back at this time in hybrid, would have more kids at home than at school. And some are opposite of that. But here's the, the final breakdown here. It's basically a 60/40 split between people who would be choosing hybrid, most likely kind of at this time 60% and 40% wanting virtual only. But I have to say, and I did include, I'm not going to read this to the public, but for school committee particularly, I did include all of the comments that the families left on that survey. And if you read those, it is very clear that nobody except for a handful of people are confident in their choice. So, and it goes either way. The people saying that they would want them to go are not confident in it. The people who are saying that they wouldn't want to go are questioning whether they would maybe feel okay in a few weeks. So it's all very gray, honestly. It really is. But it, I do have to say that by and large, people gave the teachers amazing accolades into what they're doing right now for the students. It's pretty incredible. I do want to say it's really interesting to me, the difference between the Schutze's Berry survey and the surveys that went out in Irving, Leverett and Swift River. Because there's a big difference in the results. And in the other communities, it really looks like a way larger percent of people are choosing the hybrid than the virtual. And I'm not sure what that is. You know, like I was, I was brainstorming that with some people today at school. I don't know what that is. I don't know if, if they're just being more cautious. I don't know if they are very pleasantly surprised with the virtual learning. And so they're happy with it and they don't want to kind of rock the boat for something that could be pulled. I'm not, I'm not sure what it is, but, but as you can see, I mean Leverett, we got compared to Leverett a lot in a lot of ways. They have an 82% yes rate right now on their survey, which is much different than what we're seeing. So I just want to point that out. It's, it's different. And I just wanted to say that. So then the staff results, um, as you can see, I have seven unanswered, seven staff members that did not answer. But the breakdown is about, you know, 55% of those who answered are really hoping to stay in a, in a, in a virtual only format. Eight are interested in considering the hybrid. And two people saying they're interested in a hybrid, but maybe in a different format where even in small numbers, there might be cohorts of kids that come weekly was a suggestion. And then there's just the written, the written feedback, which I'm not going to share. But I did want to just make sure the public understands that I did make sure the school committee is seeing everybody's thoughts. And I did redact identifying information so that it is, you know, you know, pretty secure information and they can get the, the gist of what you wanted to communicate. And then, um, this, I'm not of course going to go through this whole thing because it's like 20 something pages. But we do have a very substantial, in my opinion, for a little school handbook of protocols for hybrid learning. And within this, you know, we break down everything from, from, from masks to the daily checklist that would need to happen. We are the only school that I know of that is having separate entrances and exits for each classroom. So there would be no crossing or contamination between kids in classrooms. And also we have our, these are just some of the, the graphics, as you can see. We also have every classroom, except there is two that will have to share, will have their own bathroom. And I want to just say thank you to our custodian, who's also an expert map maker, which we found out because he made these awesome maps. We even have a, you know, a bathroom map where every classroom would be assigned to their own bathroom because it, kids have to go one at a time anyway. And so even the bathrooms would be contained within the grade levels, which is just like another added element of, of safety. There's a, there's in here, there's an example of a classroom, what a classroom might look like. This is our second grade classroom and Ms. Hotel was modeling for me on this day, where the desks would be at least six feet apart. They, kids would have their own bin, which you can see down here. They would have their own seating arrangements. It doesn't look like a prison, but it does, we are attempting for it to still be a classroom. And I have made, I have publicly said that I am really being committed to only 10 kids per classroom. So if there are more than 10 kids that are wanting to come back in a hybrid fashion, we would be separating them into two spaces and we have the space to do that. And there wouldn't be that many classes that would need that in terms of the survey results. And, and we would figure out with our staff how to supervise those two spaces. So in here, you know, air ventilation is a big hot button topic right now in a lot of schools. And you might be hearing a lot of schools saying that they're failing air ventilation things. And that is not the case for us. And I have the air ventilation report within here. Every single room does meet the, the quality of two air cycles and changes per hour. Most of them exceed that. And those that do meet it, you know, I was, I am also committed to buying some air purifiers for any person who might feel like they need more in their room. I, Katie, Katie Harrington is on this call. So if someone has some questions around the actual COVID stuff within the building, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer it. I'm not going to necessarily go into all of that unless there's like a real big question on it because it's pretty complicated. I do have in here the expectation that we are a tight-knit community and that if you do travel outside the state, then we are expecting you to either give us a, a test saying that you're not sick and/or stay home for 14 days and participate in remote learning until that quarantine period is over, particularly during any sort of a vacation component. Here are the metrics that I just talked about that almost every school in Hampshire Franklin is basically using these statistics. Although some schools, example, some districts like Amherst have other things within there that we do not have. Doesn't mean we won't. It just means we don't have it right now. And the biggest thing is, I'm going to stop sharing now. The biggest thing is, one of the biggest questions we're getting, and it's a really good question, and I wish I had a great answer for it right now, but I don't, is that, um, you know, everyone's wondering, you know, so if I, if I don't send my kid, my kid to school and my, my kid is staying home, but then some kids are participating in hybrid learning, like how is my kid learning at home? Like what's going on with that? Because the teacher is going to be teaching in the class and how is that going to happen? And I don't have an answer for that yet. And the teachers and I don't have an answer because we don't necessarily know. And we aren't, we are not Amherst. I can, I don't have 12 fourth grade teachers within my district where I can just assign one of them as the fourth grade hybrid teacher. That's not a luxury I have. So, um, so we would need to be more creative and I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means that we have to like videotape teachers as they're teaching lessons. I don't know if that would even be accepted. I don't know if that means I have to ask teachers who are not necessarily classroom teachers to be teaching sometimes. The, oh, I'm admitting somebody, Dan, because I'm the host. It, it's, it's not going to be easy. And our data is telling us that we're basically going to be half and half. So we would basically have half the, I mean, honestly, it's what our data, this initial survey showed me is that some classes would even have more at home, but almost all classes, except I think sixth grade would be at least half and half. And I don't have an answer for that. Doesn't mean that I couldn't think of a really awesome plan, but we haven't devoted our energy to that yet because we were trying to get through what our plan could even look like to even start to come back. And those are some of the ideas we have, but we do not have a solid piece unless the town wanted to give me a lot of money and I could hire remote teachers for every grade or, or even two grade levels at a time. It, it's going to be really challenging and it's going to be something that's going to take a lot of thought to be done in a, in a good way.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Jackie. Lot of information there. And again, I do appreciate you reaching out and trying to collect thoughts and ideas and information and putting it into a format that's a little bit easier to look at. So thank you so much. And thanks to all the parents and families and teachers that participated in that as well. So. Okay. Any questions for Jackie before we move on? Steve?
I have to apologize before I get started. I'm still all fired up from my Tuesday night regional meeting. And my first question is, how did you come up with 10 students per room?
I came up with 10 students per room because I felt like within our rooms, that would be, as a teacher, that would feel the best to me. And I also wanted to make, I wanted, I know that we, we're in a community that is, as the data is showing, more concerned about this than, than some other places. And I wanted to try to come up with a plan that would make people feel like their kid was really safe, that they were having a small amount of people around them and that they were being monitored in a really appropriate way. It doesn't have to be 10. We've, I don't have an MOA with the teachers around 10. I don't have an agreement with you around 10. I threw out 10 in my judgment because I felt as a parent and a teacher comfortable with that. But that was just a ballpark number. It could always be changed, but I think that it's appreciated by a lot of people.
And I, I understand the, you know, the, you can't like put the onus on teachers to do both hybrid and in, you know, the in-school and the remote. Because there's just no, there's no way that one person can do all that. We've had that discussion for hours on end at the other committee. But what do, how do we, I don't even know how to ask this, like how that 60% that want to come back, you know, how do we balance that with the 40 that are happy with the remote? Because you meant, you know, I think that I, I have 45 emails right now, just in the last 12 hours from the Amherst region. Most of them are from the elementary and the middle school. And I want to say that I think the numbers, at least in two of those three towns, were because the families are totally stressed in.
Oh, you're muted.
You know, families are super stressed and their kids are stressed. And the families don't know what to do. And so now that they've had their kids in school for six days and now they're being pulled back out, they're all freaking because their kids went back to the way they were last, like say February before this whole thing hit. And now, you know, now they're being pulled out again. But I really think that some of those numbers in two of those towns are because of the super stressed families.
Yeah, it's a very difficult time.
Are you, Steve, are you talking about the other schools in the union, you mean? Why it's so different?
Yes, you said you didn't, you weren't sure why, but I think from the, the, I mean, honestly, I have 75 emails in 36 hours and it's from stressed families.
Yeah, yep. And I know Leverett had a big discussion about metrics last night, big. And I don't think anything was even decided, but I know that it was a really stressful conversation.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate that.
I do see another hand up, Dan. Only, I don't know if you can see it or if it's because I'm the host, I can see it. But I see Michelle has her hand up. I don't know.
I don't see the, but go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. I, I just had a question about that picture you showed of a classroom. And I'm guessing that the state has their protocols, but I'm just wondering if there's any possibility of keeping the desks six feet apart, but turning them so that kids can engage in conversation, you know, talking and conversations. I mean, normally in Schutze's Berry, it was like the desks are all together. There's, you know, you know, a lot of interactions. So facing all the same way really precludes that, but.
I know, I know. It's heartbreaking for all of us to see that, but that's actually one of the state requirements is that everyone's facing the same way so that the breathing is happening in the same way and there's not cross-breathing. You know, I think it's, and they're going to have masks on, obviously, but they're really that if you go on.
I figured it was.
If you go, yeah. If you go onto the Desi website, you'll see that they have models and all of the desks are facing front. It does. It feels like we're going back to like, yeah.
It's backwards.
1960s, I know, but it's really only for the health, for the health component.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your.
And Dan, do you see that in the chat, there's, Katrina has a question?
No, Jackie, do you want to switch it over to me and I'll, while Katrina's asking her question?
Can you hear me? I could just ask now.
Yes, ask now.
Okay, sorry. I don't know how to raise a hand or anything cool. We do most of it on Google.
Me either.
You should have, you should be host now, Dan.
Okay.
Um, I guess I have a few concerns and questions. And my first question is, is there ever going to be a time where they wouldn't be half-days? I personally don't understand why we'd be ending the day at 11:30. I understand, I understand everything about the COVID part. I've got that part down. But is there ever going to be a part where they would go earlier than January to actual full remote days where they get more of that social and everything else that they all are very much craving? Is that an option? I guess was one of my questions. And then concerns I would say I have is I have one daughter who has an IP and I have another daughter who's in second grade. And they're both, their platforms and how they're doing their, everything has been amazing. My only concern is I see their mental status plummeting. It's sad to see.
We're with you. Don't worry.
I know. Sorry, that's what I was trying not to do. So it's sad to see because they're very both social girls. And it's hard for them to understand that if they do go back, I've explained, we've gone over the restrictions and they know all these things, but they still just crave their actual peers. And I don't know if there's going to be a solution to have like an outdoor play group or something to give them those needs. Because they're not getting, like they will get met in the meets and I want to apologize for me getting emotional because this is ridiculous. But it's just, I'm that parent who's stressed.
Yeah. So you, you have a lot of things that all, all of us are thinking and thank you for voicing them. The first thing is, is the reason why we're starting for half-days is, well, it doesn't have, I mean, it's the school committee's decision. So they don't have to do half-days if they don't want to. But the reason why half-days was proposed was because we first didn't want to deal with lunch and eating and all of the health things around that. And, and, and also get the kids acclimated to being apart from each other in school and also wearing a mask. So it, I don't think it was ever our intent to always stay half-day. I think we wanted to begin half-day for a substantial amount of time to one, build up mask tolerance in all of our students and teachers. Two, not have to have the stressor of how we're going to deal with kids eating right away. And first focus on how we're in school together during this time, how we have to remain apart from each other, but still be together, how we need to wear our mask, how we need to take our mask break, how we're going to be able to operate within our classroom. How we need to wear our mask, how we need to take our mask break, how we're going to be able to operate within our classroom. How we're not going to be going to the bathroom like normal anymore, how we're going to enter and exit in a different way. So it was ju, it just felt like a more, a safer, more developmentally appropriate way to introduce kids back into learning with restrictions. Particularly our little kids. Um, and then, you know, I think we would, there would. There was always in my mind, at least going to be a time where we would reevaluate again and then possibly change and, and extend the time if that was, if that was appropriate at that time. So that's going to answer the question, that's my answer for your question around the half days. Um, in terms of, of um, the social. And I'm sorry if I'm missing another question, but then you had a question about like a social group or a social meetup.
Yeah, some type of social situation where they could see more than like just where we do pickups for supplies and stuff like. I'm that creepy parent that is lingering in the parking lot with my kids.
I saw you today. I saw you today and I saw the girls waving at me.
Yeah, they didn't believe. And that's like, when I go there, they want me to stay much longer and I wouldn't mind like. If it had to be a masked playdate like on the, the park or something, but like maybe something that could be organized if we are going to stay remote only, that we can have. That aspect because I feel that our town is extremely safe for the fact that our numbers are so low and I. Wherever I go in this town, everyone has respected the whole mask situation very well that it's. I haven't been, it has never been a concern in my eyes. I feel like. So I just, I just feel like I, I don't want to be that creepy parent to keep on lingering.
You're not creepy. I noticed a lot of people lingering today. So you're, you're not creepy. I think I, I, you know, we were given instructions when we started this, you know, all of the Union 28 schools, we were really, we were focusing on remote learning. And even though different teachers had different ideas about possible social groups. As a union, we made the decision to just stick with the remote learning for this period of time. That does not mean that, that now going forward, we can't think more creatively. And I, I know I am, and I've had several emails from teachers who are ready to think more creatively. Around possible meetups in classrooms outside, doing some art pieces or doing some sort of class, you know, connection piece outside. Um, with masks and um, I think that, that is certainly something that we could explore. Uh, going forward, and I think that there are many people who feel the same way, including staff members that feel the same way like you about potentially some social. Some social pieces, if that's the plan that's chosen.
Okay.
It's all very, very fluid. So um, I think uh, administration and teachers and staff have really been working together to try to come up with a plan. And I think we're going to all understand that that plan will be flexible and based upon lots of different things. And as people be. Hopefully we begin to feel more confident and comfortable. Um, we can see how things go from there. Thank you for sharing your comments.
Thank you.
Dan, I see Nina with a hand up and then I saw Steve waving.
Yeah, um, so and Michelle, you have already spoken. I'm going to take your hand down, okay? And Nina, if you want to speak, that's great.
Thanks for giving me a little bit more time. I was lurking at the school today with Tina. Um, I just had a question, Jackie, about um, whether there's ever been any thought about doing something. Like what Amherst is doing in terms of phasing kids at different grade levels in at different times. So. Um, I know Amherst was trying to bring in the kindergarteners and first graders first and then. Um, on from there. I mean, I didn't get a super close look at your data, but I did notice the kindergarten numbers are really skewed relative to the other numbers. It looked like nine out of 11 wanted to come back for hybrid. And the first grade numbers did look like they were much higher than 60, 40. And I wonder if that's just representative of like how much harder it is for the younger kids to be. Remote learning. So I am sure that there are enormous complications with like just bringing some of the kids back, but not all of them. Um, that I am unaware of, but I was just curious if you thought about that at all as a possibility.
Yeah, that's, um, that was one of the proposed options. You know, this has been. A nightmare process. Let's just be honest, uh, throughout this whole thing. And. Back in August, that was one of the options we presented to the committee, which was a phased in plan. Um, starting with the littler children first. Um, that was not the plan that was adopted or thought to go forward, but that doesn't mean that it. That it can't be now. You know, I think the, the, the purpose of this, this meeting is to hear things. And then I believe the committee is going to meet again to decide on what's going to happen. And that can be whatever. Choice is there. So if there wanted to be a proposal of a phased in approach with little kids, then that could certainly be put forth as a, as a proposal. And voted upon. Yeah.
Thank you, Nina. Okay, are there, uh, Steve, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to. Put it, put it out there for those who are unaware that of the um. The issue around transportation and if we try and do anything during the school day. That for those students who don't have a parent, grandparent, guardian, caregiver who can get them to the school. Then we have to offer transportation, but I think if you did it after the school day. That we would not, you know, just like the sports and Amherst and the drama, that you do not have to offer transportation and it could be done. In the after school hours, but it cannot be done without transportation during the day.
Yeah, Steve, that's something that uh, thank you for bringing that up because that is another factor of why we didn't start things during the school day, any sort of social piece. Um, you know, just for the school committee's knowledge, though, I just want to put the nugget of information in there is we're still paying for buses. Right now. Um, so it's not like we're not paying for buses, even though they're not being utilized. So. If that ever needed to be utilized, that could be something that could be worked on because they are being paid for.
Yes, that's um, Doug's, Dr. Doug Slaughter is still in negotiations with Five Star over how mu, yes, it's true, we are, we are paying them, but. It's not the full boat, but it's, it's more than enough that we really should be using them, like you say.
Right, especially if uh, some of the bus companies are being able to take advantage of um, some of the CARES Act's money like the PPP, so.
Or even use one of them for pickups, you know?
All right. So lots, lots more to think about as we move forward. And again, I guess the theme of the night is communication and sharing ideas and thoughts. And Jackie, I know you're always welcoming to that. So, perfect. All right. Is there anything else before we move on to new business? April, was that you making a comment?
Yeah, April, she wrote, she had, she wrote in the, in the chat.
Uh, yeah, that was, that was me. I was just mentioning, I was thinking about this on the way to school today. Um, that yes, I think we should, if we're paying the bus company, um, there's a lot we could do. We could think about field trips. Where parents who could drive kids to a destination could drive them. And then kids who, who didn't have transportation could take the bu, could be driven there on the bus. We could do some really interesting things with that.
Great. So let's think about those ideas as well. I appreciate everybody's input. All right. So I thank you all for sharing in this conversation. And as we move forward, we'll keep the lines of communication open. So, thank you. All right. I want to move on the agenda to new business items. And the next item on the agenda is the academic calendar. We need to amend that. Is that correct, Jackie? You're muted.
I actually don't, I think the, I think what's happening is uh. We're taking away the, which we already did. Uh, we're taking away the um. The two professional development days and uh, putting in full days of learning. And that's because we're wanting to make sure that we're getting the appropriate amount of minutes on time on learning in for the state.
So why don't we motion to amend uh, the academic calendar for FY21?
Can I make one comment?
Let's, let's start the motion in a second and then we'll discuss it.
So moved.
Okay, in a second.
A second.
All right. Now, Steve, go ahead.
All right. So every time this, this calendar show is up, it drives me bonkers. Cause four years ago, the Chutesbury School Committee voted to eliminate that Columbus Day thing. And go with Indigenous Peoples' Day and it keeps showing up on the Union 28 calendar as Columbus Day.
Yeah, well, on Chutesbury, we always write Indigenous people on our website.
Yes. But so, and so Union 28 has not.
I don't think all of the towns have, but I don't think that that means, you know, we can have, we have our own calendar from that.
No, yes, it's, the last year was the first time that it, every time it came through with the Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I thank you for that. But I was just curious about the Union 28 calendar.
Yeah, I don't think Irving, I believe Irving is not in favor of that, but I'm not positive on that. So don't, do not take my word.
All right. So that's something we can always discuss at a Union 28 meeting. But as far as the Chutesbury FY21 academic calendar, are there any other questions or concerns about the amendments? Okay, roll call vote. Um, in favor?
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pegg, an aye.
Sullivan, an aye.
Azai, all right. Next on the item uh, agenda is capital expenditure plan. Uh, and Jackie, I want to thank you for sending us the list of the future capital projects. Um, Bruce, do we know anything about where we are with the roof?
I, I second that laugh.
I, I believe, and I'll direct me if I'm wrong, but Becky at the town halls. Beginning the initial phase of um. Hiring a design professional. Because we, um, because of the scale, the project law requires that we hire a design professional. Before we can go out to bid with it. So. You know, I'll be doing an application with MSBA again this spring, once it opens up or this winter. It really, Jackie and I will both concur that we need to do some work on the roof, so.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to publicly say as the principal, Steve, Steve can speak to his role as the, as the school committee rep to this. As the principal of the school, I don't even want anything else discussed about capital planning until the roof is figured out. Because now this is literally year number seven, where I've been fighting about the roof. And it's just getting progressively worse. You know, Bruce was saying that Matt was saying that it's now going into the wall near a kitchen. Like it's just, it's just, it, it's, it's, it's time to like. And if MS, MS, whatever that is, that we do every year and they always find a reason that we don't qualify. Like it, it's time to just like. Think of some other things on how we're going to do it.
Okay, so while we just kind of glance over these others. Um, perhaps Lauren, you can write down maybe a really stern, strong sounding emotion. Um, but we'll just review these others because I do think it's important that we have a motion that um. We're accepting these capital planning projects because that's going to go with Steve to the town, to the capital planning committee. Um, and I think we just need a really strong sounding uh, motion uh, that states our position on that. I mean, I know that we have talked about this year after year, but you know, maybe we could use words like desperate or. All right, Lauren?
It's like, it's a critical, it's a critical uh, need.
And maybe all the letters could be capitalized, that we could do a couple exclamation points, but I think. I think we need to get our message across that. And I think Jackie, that was a very good point that, you know. This is the absolute priority. It needs to be done. We need to get it done. You know, all of those things in the motion. And while you're kind of contemplating that, Lauren. Um. Steve, do you want to say something?
Thank you. Alrighty. So the school roof, Jackie, it's actually 2000.
Hope you're muted.
2006 is when the roof started to leak. And so it's only 14 years.
Yeah, just 14.
Just, just 14 that I'm aware of. So it could even go back further than that. But as far as other um, capital planning items. The um, the estimate from RK Miles for 10,000, we appropriated $7,000. For the doors replacement last year because one of the capital planning members thought we could take 4,000 that was encumbered. For the floors and move it to doors, but we can't. It needs to stay with floors. So we need to add $5,000 for the doors to finish them. And I don't think besides the roof and that, the conference room doors, we should really put anything else on. Because we're, Matt still has money left for floors. It's just going to leave. Polly's room, the conference room, and the art room is undone. So we really should just focus on getting the 5,000 to finish to get the patio doors. Although that's not going to cover the doors for the library.
No.
And the roof. And yes, um. I convinced Becky, she's going through the fur cog to find a consultant. So we can hot, so the consultant can hire this design firm, so we can hire an engineer. So in 10 years, we can replace the roof.
So perhaps we have a motion for capital planning projects to be just the roof, period. And we provide the town with the list to say there are other items that we would like coming down the pipe, but we, we don't. We're not even asking for any of those at this point.
Does that sound? Yes, but you're absolutely right. We need to give them the list that takes it out. I mean, five years is good, but they love to see even 10, even though it doesn't make any difference.
Like, like, the, the parking lot and Steve, you, you, the highway department actually agrees with us. The parking lot is really bad. But like, whatever, I'll deal with the parking lot if we can get the roof fixed, you know, but the parking lot should be on the list because it is not awesome. Um, you know, but it's definitely like priorities. It's like not there, you know, the roof is there.
Right. So again, I think we should basically be asking for the roof. Uh, and in addition to that, we'll provide them a list of other items for future.
Yeah, and we can share that document. That's just a living document that I have. And I also make sure I, in, at least since I've been there, I put in. The historical notes of what we've done too over the past years, which has been a lot. Um, and so that people can understand like what has happened and what is to come. Because the other thing I was going to bring up, and again, it, it's not um, nearly as important as the roof. But I don't know if you've noticed, but the building's looking really shabby on the front. The paint job is not awesome. Um, and the roof is not helping that because now there's like mold and like decay going across the front. Because of the, the amazing amount of water that's passing through there. Um, and so it's looking a little uh. Bad. Um, but also if you do, if you take a walk around the building, it is peeling and it is not looking stellar. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there that at some point it, it's going to need to be painted.
And that is on the list. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Jen?
As part of our motion, can we, is there anything that we can do about like asking for that within a certain timeframe? Like the plan and accomplishment of the roof? Or is it, is it really done up to, out of our hands to make that recommendation? Exclamation points are great, but.
It's out of, it's out of our hands. It, all we can do is, yeah, put big exclamation points and on it, that. It's now gone, it's now out of the hands of the billings committee, which it's been in since 2006 and is now moving forward with Becky.
You know what? I think um, I'm sure you're right, Stephen, but I kind of like Jen's idea. And I'm wondering if we could um. Uh, ask to have it completed by uh, September of 20. Two, 20.
Yes, 22 sounds great.
Or September 2021, I don't know.
I don't know how long it. I don't know how long it takes to do a roof, so you're asking the wrong person for me.
Because all they can say is, well, we, we can't do it by twenty-twenty-one, let's say twenty-twenty-one. I like twenty-twenty-one. All right, Lauren, do you have a motion for?
Okay, I don't know, I definitely know I want exclamation points at the end, and I want to underline things along the way. I move that we, um, move forward a capital expenditure plan with a focus on the critical need of fixing our roof by September twenty-twenty-one. How's that? Exclamation point, underline, please.
Great, and, uh, and then we'll also provide the, the list of capital planning, uh, needs moving forward, so. Uh, do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
All right, uh, roll call.
Oh, I wanted, as a little piece of discussion, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Matt about the exact number, but it's either four or five thousand dollars we need to finish to get enough to do that doors in the conference room.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, roll call out, or roll, roll call for the vote?
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Azai, all right, thank you. Um, one other quick thing on new business is, um, MASC is having their annual conference. Um, is anyone going to be attending the conference, it's virtual this year on November seventh? Okay, I'll, I'll plan on attending, um, and I would ask if, uh, you would elect me as the delegate so that I could vote on the resolutions.
I move to elect Dan the delegate for the MASC conference.
I second that.
Okay, roll call vote?
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Okay, Azai, all right, thank you. All right, moving on to reports, um, Bruce, do you have anything to report in the superintendent's report?
I do not, I don't know if Jackie has anything, but, um, Jen's pretty sick right now, and we, she's kind of down for the count, and we're just plugging along the best we can, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've, you, you've seen everything that I've, that we've been working on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the Director of Finance and Operations report.
So, just a couple things, um, I have finalized and submitted the end year report. Just need to make you aware of it, so Dan can sign that this is the school committee chair, it's been submitted. Um, second thing is, we're beginning the budget process, um, I sent you a copy of uh, the U twenty-eight budget as proposed, first draft. Um, if anybody has any comments on that, questions or anything, please direct them to me. And that's all I have for tonight. As crazy as it's been, my life's been reporting, so.
Okay, thank you, I did glance through that budget, uh, it does look like you factored in, uh, moving into the schools, or correct?
That was one other thing. Uh, we're targeting, I am anyway, the tenth to be our actual moving day. So.
Okay.
Until November, it gives us a kind of a day to rest after, as we have the eleventh office holiday, so.
Okay, perfect. All right, and that's it for you?
That's it for me, Dan, thank you.
Thank you. Um, just, I'm sorry to do this, I just want to circle around real quick to Stephen. Do, did you get these reports, these I think you have to fill out for capital planning? Or is that okay?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, you can, you're gonna do that?
I, yeah, Matt and I can do that.
Perfect, thank you, just wanted to make sure. All right, Jackie, Principal's report.
I, I don't think I need to be talking too much more, I think you all see what's going on, um, you know, we're, the teachers are amazing, and no, it is not perfect, but they're doing an amazing job with remote learning. Um, we're finding ways to try to get the community involved, the Heather Lobenstein has come up with a very safe library component where people are able to check out books electronically and pick them up um, in a very safe way, and our food pickup's going well, and, um, almost all teachers are having some sort of a materials pickup time where there's some, a little bit of a connection with a student. I've noticed some families meeting up on the playground after to try to have a social component there too. Um, you know, it's, uh, it's days of listening to feedback and getting information and trying to, uh, put it together so that everyone can understand, you know, all of the voices and opinions at the, at the moment, and it's really hard, let me just say, it's very hard every day, it's very hard.
Well, Jackie, what I appreciate is the fact that you are working towards building towards a consensus. Um, and I hope that all of the people that are involved in the process can see that and that ultimately it may not be what one person wants or what another person gets, or it's gonna be sort of what all of us can manage to work through as, as a team and, and, and together, so. I appreciate all of your effort and, um, and the teachers, the staff, uh, and the parents, I think they've been wonderful, so. All right, well, thank you for all that you're speaking tonight. Stephen?
Oh, hi. All right, so I'm sure everyone's aware that on Friday, tomorrow will be the last in-student day for the pre-K one, and maybe it was even, no, it wasn't even second grade, it was just pre-K K and one, and all of the high need students throughout the districts, they'll be on a two-week vacation starting on Monday. And the regional school committee is actually an executive session right now voting on whether to reopen negotiations with the teachers because we have been, um, buried isn't even the word, with comments from people, this, uh, fifty, at least fifty minutes of public comment before the executive session tonight, just from me, our meeting on Tuesday night, and, um, I have to say, if Katrina, if you're still there, please don't feel like you're alone. I, I have to honestly say there are at least fifteen or eighteen emails that I've responded to personally that tell the same story that you're telling, or I mean, some, some of them are even, I mean, they're all heartbreaking, but it's, it's, it's just gut-wrenching, and, um, so we'll s- the, um, the you, the high school sports teams have been able to play about half of their games and matches because of what happened with the UMass spike, there were a number of towns that just refused to play Amherst because of that spike. Um, there was a really cool drama, a drive-through drama with the theater department last weekend, I didn't, I didn't get to attend, but, so they're, they're going, they're going strong. And, um, what else is going strong, which is to my great dismay, is Morse Hill. I don't know if anyone's aware of that, but they have taken a large number of students from the middle school and high school, and have also pilfered from Pelham and the Amherst region. And as far as I recall, we have not authorized them to operate. So I don't know if.
They are not operating, they, to my knowledge, they are not operating as a school, they are operating, they are operating as a learning center and people are doing homeschooling.
But they're still gathering in numbers, so I don't know, I mean, I'm happy to call a building inspector and ask them to check it out, but I don't really want to. But I, but the region has lost a large number of students to that program. And, oh, and the last thing will be, I have to give a high five to the Shute's Berry Elementary School in the town of Shute's Berry, because we have the exact same number of students, not counting preschool, as Pelham. And at the meeting on Tuesday night, Pelham is meeting with their, on Tuesday, to discuss how they can stay open, because unlike Shute's Berry, you know, they grabbed that for that ring of school choice, and they have lost twenty-five school choice students just this year. And so they are hurting puppies, and I don't, the superintendent wasn't even sure if they could make it through the school year. So, kudos to Shute's Berry and its hundred students, where we didn't grab that ring and we're still going. So I think that's my report.
Hundred and twelve students.
Yes, but that counts, that's preschool too, where both Pelham and Leverett had to give up their preschools this year, so that's why I, I didn't count that. Yes, kudos to Grace too, woo!
Yeah, well, and we, we would have more, but we chose to do preschool differently, I think you remember. And, uh, with our homeschool people that will come back, we were gonna have more kids this year than last year if it was a normal year.
All right, well, thank you, Stephen, Union twenty-eight?
Uh, we just had a, a budget and personnel meeting, um, and, uh, uh, I want to have everybody take a look at the budget that Bruce presented, but, um, you know, the, the central office has worked really hard to reduce costs to cover, um, and so the budget is really lean and it really thoughtful, and, um, they worked really hard on it, so. Uh, I just mostly want to make note of that, and, uh, since my mic is on, I just want to s- say too that, um, as a teacher and a parent, um, this situation is so hard, and there isn't anybody who, I just want to reassure people that we're, we're school committee members, but we're, we're part of the community, and this is har- really hard. And, um, you know, there isn't a side, not that it's about sides, but there isn't any part of this that, that we don't, that I think, um, certain, I mean, I'll just speak for myself, that I don't feel really deeply, so I want to make sure that, that people know that, um, that we're taking this incredibly seriously, and we know how hard it is, we know how hard it is for the teachers and how hard they're working, we know the impact that it has on and it's, you know, no matter what we do, it's going to be hard, um, but just, uh, please know that we, we hear you and we feel it. We feel it really deeply, so.
And I see the other school committee members also nodding their heads, I think we're all in agreement with you, so, thank you for sharing that. All right, collaborative, I don't think I have anything to report since last time. All right, policy review, first reading. So, I don't need to do anything with that on remote learning. Unless anyone has any comments or anything, if they do, they, it might be easier to sort of email them to the policy subcommittee. Same thing with the immunization of students and the policy on COVID-related issues, those will come back next meeting for the first vote. Following that, future business, you can read all of those dates. Is there anything else, uh, that anyone would like to discuss or say before we go into, uh, executive session uh, with a few other people to discuss matters of collective bargaining and returning back into open session? Okay, so, uh, we will roll call vote out, um, and invite, uh, Jackie and Bruce, Trevor, um, I don't, I think we could probably take any notes if we come back into open public session. Are you all right with that, Jackie, Bruce, and school committee members? So that this way you don't have to come back in, because to tell you the truth, I'm not sure how that's gonna work for me. All right, so let's roll call vote out.
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Okay, Azai, so Bruce, you will be connecting us, oh, Trevor?
Uh, I didn't get the, who made the motion or the second for the executive session.
Oh, I tried to catch you, thank you.
I'll move to move into executive session.
A second.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the, the motion I have is written as Jen moved to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, not to return to public session afterward, that's kind of the boilerplate.
Perfect. And we all roll called out already, so. All right, so Bruce, you're gonna connect us, is that right?
Uh, you have to connect yourself, but I'm the host.
Okay. So what do we have to do again?
Do you drop it in the chat, do you drop it in the chat?
No, is it?
Have it on your calendar.
Oh, I don't think I was invited to it. Um, I don't need to go, I don't, but I'm just telling you, I don't think I was invited to it.
Are you able to put the link in the chat, that would help?
Well, yeah, I don't know if that works.
Bruce is the host.
Just a minute. I'm gonna get back into my this over here.
And, uh, yeah, I don't know how this is gonna work.
Take care, Trevor.
Yeah, I don't think you were invited, Jackie.
Okay.
Uh, but you don't feel like you need to, okay, all right.
I don't really, and I haven't been a part of any of it either, so I don't actually know.
Okay.
Anything.
I'm sorry.
And I'm trying to get it in, get on here, um.
I mean, I don't know, if, if you're not going back to any kind of public session, I don't know if Martina and Leah are still on, but you could also kick them off and then be in, be in the meeting yourself.
We are gonna go back into public session?
Okay.
Becky and Toby, Becky's coming in the other way.
Is Trevor still there? Cause he's got, it's not coming back into executive session.
Yeah, he did say that.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he said you weren't coming back.
Oh.
All right.
I'll email him.
Well, if you all have the, if you guys all have the link, then.
I don't, I can't find the link.
I'm not sure where it is either.
Dan, did you say Becky's joining us in the other space?
Yes.
Okay.
And Stephen, you're texting, uh, or emailing Trevor? Okay.
Oh, I.
Or, um.
Do you want me to put it in the chat here, I found it?
Yeah.
Forwarding it to you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Jennifer, I send it to your other email, I don't have Shute's Berry email handy.
That's actually better for me, perfect, thank you, I was gonna have to get on my phone otherwise, because I don't, these are my settings.
Yeah, I'm trying to get onto the phone to do it, but, uh.
So if you can leave this meeting open and move to the other meeting, then we can come back to this meeting, and, okay?
All right, I'll just. So let me, before you leave, Bruce, let me make sure I can get on there.
Well, let me, I gotta get in.
All right, I'm gonna go, bye, guys.
Bye, Jackie, thank you.
I think I'm gonna exit this meeting and I'll come back when, if we come back. I think I'm gonna exit this meeting and I'll come back when, if we come back.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, invite, okay. I click invite. Jen, don't leave me.
Okay.
So on my phone, I click on invite.
Yep.
Do that, where you can click on your calendar, Dan?
Well, I, I went onto my calendar. Okay, let me go back there.
You're trying to join?
Yes. So I go and click on the invitation. Then I hit accept.
Accept, join Google Meet.
Okay. So, are you in both of them right now, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be you and Steve is in there?
Uh, yep. And Bruce.
Okay, and.
And Lauren and Bruce.
And Lauren, okay, so.
Were you in there? Are you able to get in?
No, I can't get in there. All right, I, I go to my calendar. Hold on, see, invitation, executive session. I click on that. It says forward invitation, forward invitation. Oh, maybe I go to the second one. Accept.
This, this should be one when you go in there, Dan, like a line that says, join, join Google Meet or something. I'm afraid if I get too many things open here.
All right, let me go back to calendar. Oh, join with Google Meet?
Yeah.
Hangout or Safari? I'll go Safari. Okay, I think something's happening. Open. Let's get, well, you know, I can do it by the phone too, right? All right, so. Call. Is it ringing you, Bruce?
Here you are.
Number eight six.
Okay, so we're all in the other meeting. I'm gonna mute here.
That worked out okay. You can dial in.
Oh, God. All right. Let's see. Okay. All right. So. Is everybody on? School committee members, okay?
Yeah.
So why don't I make the motion in regards to a settlement agreement? And Bruce, it's pretty much just all written out there, so you don't have to write everything I'm saying. So basically, it'll be the agreement between the Shootsberry School Committee and the Shootsberry Elementary Educators and Shootsberry affiliated workers that we will vote to agree on the contract to reflect a one-term contract commencing on July 1st, 2020. The salary schedule will be a 1.5% increase to all salary schedules for 2020 through 2021. Uh, parties will also agree to enter into negotiations for an agreement of mutual understanding for the safe return of staff and students prior to reopening of schools for in-person learning. And the parties also agreed to commence negotiations on a successor collective bargaining agreement in early 2021. That is the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so Bruce, maybe you should just make sure that you know that I made the motion. Jen Malcolm Brown, you made the second, is that right? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll roll call, uh, vote on that.
Malcolm Brown, aye.
Thomas Pickman, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Azai. Okay, is there anything else before we adjourn? So I also want to think, go ahead.
Is the meeting schedule correct or is there another, do we need to, is there any other meeting that we need in between now and November 19th?
Yes, right?
Yeah, we will have to make another meeting and I'll be in contact with Jennifer hopefully soon and Jackie and Bruce and, and.
Great.
I appreciate everybody's help. It's, none of this is easy for anyone. You know, that old saying, you can't teach an old dog new tricks. Sometimes I'm starting to believe that, you know, this technology stuff is very difficult. I'm a people person.
You, you, you're doing fine. Don't even worry about it. These meetings, somebody doesn't, you know, it always works that way. Don't worry.
All right, well, I appreciate everybody's help and I thought tonight's meeting went well, so I thank you all very much.
Yes, thanks for leaving, Dan.
All right. All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Night.
Good night, everybody. Good night, thank you, Bruce. Good night, Steve. Good night.
You did fine, Dan. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.